Alright, so people who go in, there's somebody into chapter questions that that's what we're gonna talk about. So I grabbed this one, it's from chapter fourteen, number eighty-six. Decomposition of N two O to N two and O two is a first order reaction. At a certain temperature, the half-life is three, is a certain half-life. The initial pressure, calculate the total gas pressure after one half-life. So first of all, this is a half-life question. And we already asked you about half-lives. So there are actually no half-lives. So this, this was an exam one question. This was fine for exam one, which means it's also fine for the final. But this is not actually something that we would ask you on exam two, on exam three, or on exam four. So we had the chance to ask you this. We are not actually gonna do this. That being said, let me go ahead and chat a little bit about what nice things are in this problem. That's also why I went ahead and grabbed the key, because I'm actually not gonna do this whole thing out. Because there's some things in here that are useful and some things that are not so useful. So first of all, being able to take this line here and make a chemical reaction, not a bad idea. So this is the decomposition of N two O to N two and O two. This does need to be balanced. So this is where for kinetics, it's fine that it's not balanced. One of the things that would be tricky in a, in an equilibrium question is if this was supposed to look like this, and I think these are all gases. But the question that we'd have, so actually, we'd assume that it looked like this, and that we didn't have any half exponents, would be the assumption that we would make. So, but at least now we have a balanced chemical equation. And then it says that the half-life is three point five eight times ten to the third. Not sure why my pen's a little sad today. And then at the initial pressure is two point one atmospheres. So this is the part where we wouldn't do this part to you. So it's not bad since when we're in chapter sixteen and we're talking about things like volume changes and pressure changes. It's not bad to be reminded that volume and pressure go together, because that's kind of an essential gas law thing. It, it's a good thing to know, and it comes back at various intervals. But that really is the step where we wouldn't do that to you on an exam. Because then you actually do need things like the ideal gas law. So that's what that is. The thing that's interesting, I will say, is it asks you to calculate the total gas pressure. So what it's actually asking you to do. So if this two point one was actually a number of moles, then we could go ahead and say, well, after one half-life, we would expect, so if it's two point one moles, which it's not. That's, that's not exactly what that is. But if it's, if it was two point one moles, after one half-life, we would expect to have one point oh five moles after one half-life of the N two O. Which means we should be able to then take the other part that was used up by reactant and calculate how much we have. We can think about this in a lot of different ways. So what I was trying to gear up for, oh, one note. So what I was gearing up for and what we certainly could do is we could do stoichiometry like this and say for every one point oh five moles of N O two, or sorry, N two O, we get two moles of nitrogen gas. So we get two point one moles of N two gas. We could do the exact same math again, but then do it for the, oh, sorry, this is two and two, so that's the same. This will be the same amount of nitrogen or oxygen. We then would put a two here and one up here, oxygen. So we could do things like this to figure out how many moles we would have in total, and then just go ahead and back calculate. Your book goes ahead and does something more complicated. And that's fine. Basically, instead of doing this one by one, and then adding them all together to say, okay, so we started off with a certain number of moles. Now, what should we have? Your textbook went ahead and decided that we should do that basically all, all in one go. So essentially, to figure out how much in total we should have, we would just then add all of those together. So we have this leftover one point oh five moles. We have the new moles of nitrogen. We have the new moles of oxygen. We could add them all together, and that would then get us two point six two five moles. And again, I'm assuming everything is moles when everything is actually pressures, so that would also be different. Also, my one note is crapping out on me really early today. Great. So these are some options of what you could do. The book, again, decided to do it differently and decided to basically do everything all in one go. So here it is, talking about going from the two point one atmospheres. Again, I left everything in moles. And then they just went ahead and said, oh, well, you know, based on the ratios, you'd have two point five new moles of gas or moles of gas total, and that would get you two point six three atmospheres. So notice that's two point six three. I have two point six three. So there were different ways to think through that. Yeah, also, if you wanted to, I guess I'm just gonna hang on to that. Definitely could have taken a look at an intro ice table essentially, and done N two O into O two, that's a two, that's a two, and say that we started with two point one. We start with zero, we start with zero, we lose X. Actually, we lose two X, we gain two X, we gain X. But we know that it's a half. And so that's one point one five, point oh five, that's half of that, so zero point five two five. And again, we just add them all together. So there were a lot of different ways to approach this problem. Your textbook wanted to know total pressure, so it took a little bit of extra time, a little bit of extra doing. And I have to close out of one note and open it again, because one note is not being my friend today. Great. So we'll try it again. Bad news is when it does that, it usually erases most of my work. Okay, I guess I'll just share the whole screen. It's fine. Try to avoid that, but that way I don't forget something. So there were, there were some options, but thing, there were things obviously that we would not be doing in there. Next one actually is in chapter sixteen. This is considering the equilibrium. This does then have something I mentioned in the review last night, but says what would the effect on equilibrium position of increasing the total pressure on the system by decreasing its volume? So this, again, we could do this the quick way. So these are both gases. So I have two moles of gas. On this side, I have one mole of gas on this side. So this is fewer. This is more. If I decrease the volume, so I go from a large volume to a small volume. So since my volume decreases, that essentially will increase the pressure. I want fewer moles of gas. The other thing you can look at, by the way, is you can also say that since my volume decreases, I also want fewer moles of gas. So if this is just, so from the review video last night, where I calculated out some partial pressures to doing the shorter version, volume goes down, pressure goes up, fewer moles of gas. At the end of the day, this is volume goes down, you're looking for fewer moles of gas. So my fewer moles of gas, we already saw was where I had one mole, which is to the right. So A, I would shift right. And then B, adding I two to the reaction mixture. So I'm looking for where that is. So I'm looking for I two for my iodine, my diatomic iodine. It's right there. So I'm gonna add more. That's gonna increase the amount of my products. If I am increasing my products, then what I'm gonna wind up doing is shifting to the left. That's a K versus Q thing. So for B, I would shift left. I essentially have too many products. I'm gonna shift back to reactants. And then decreasing the temperature. So this is the one that maybe after the review video yesterday, you guys can't actually take a look at this and figure out what's, if this is endothermic or exothermic and why. So this has bonds forming as you go from left to right. So bonds are being formed. Bonds are formed. I go from two independent iodine to them being bonded together. Bonds are being formed. Since bonds are being formed, that is exothermic. And so that is exothermic, I can essentially add heat over here on the right-hand side. So if I decrease the temperature, I'm essentially, it's like I'm losing a product. So this is going to then shift to the right, to essentially replace the products of heat that I have lost. Yeah, that's, that's how you know exothermic and endothermic. Is if it's, it has to be really small like this, by the way. It has to basically be where there are two things on one side and one thing on the other side, and they're just coming together or, or breaking apart, and that's all. So it has to be a very small reaction for us to be able to make that assumption. Otherwise, you don't know. Okay, another Lachatley's principle. Consider the gas phase reaction to carbon monoxide plus oxygen makes two CO two. So this actually is another one where, because I have two things and one thing, I could also go ahead and assume that bonds are being formed. Because I'm making a new thing, so I could also go ahead and say that this one is exothermic. I don't even know if we need that. It says predict the shift in equilibrium position when helium gas is added to the equilibrium mixture at constant pressure and at constant volume. Okay, so for the records, we pretty much only actually consider at constant volume. And I will show you why. So constant volume is what we've been doing the entire time. So when you have constant volume and you have whatever your equilibrium mixture all is together, do, 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 do. And then we add some sort of other gas. The thing is in here, the total pressure does go up, but the partial pressures don't change. So whatever my partial pressures were of all of my individual pieces do not change if my volume is constant. Because the only thing that's happening then is I'm adding a gas, but I didn't add any of these components. I didn't add any carbon dioxide or carbon monoxide or oxygen. So whatever the partial pressures were of each one of those gases is the same. The total pressure of the whole thing does change, but my constant volume, there's actually, there should be no change. And this is the thing that we assume when we're making this change. So constant volume, no change. Also, pressure is different. So if we're doing something at constant pressure, the thing is, is that if we're doing something at constant pressure and we already had a gas in here, and then we're coming in and we're adding a new gas. But if before the total pressure was, we'll just say it was three atmospheres. And that's because I had three gases. If then my new total pressure still needs to be three atmospheres, but originally I had like one atmosphere of CO two, and I had one atmosphere of carbon monoxide, and I had one atmosphere of, well, the other gas, oxygen. When I have a new change, but the pressure has to stay the same, but now I have to have a certain amount that is CO two, a certain amount that is carbon monoxide, a certain amount that's O two, and a certain amount that's helium. Now this three atmospheres isn't gonna be broken up the same way. So whatever combination we want, because we'd reach, we'd reach equilibrium again, we're just gonna say that the helium is one. And because I don't know how much helium was added, and my carbon dioxide, do we give a, no, don't know. And my carbon dioxide can also be one, and my carbon monoxide can then be a half. I don't know. Whatever it is. But, but point being is, is that these are gonna, weird. I don't like dividing things by three, but I did it to myself. Anyway, all of these are gonna go down, or all can be smaller. Oh, it's not so bad. Three divided by four, zero point seven five. We'll just assume that these are now zero point seven five. This is because the helium got added. So they were all the same, and now they're also all the same, but now I have helium. So now all of my partial pressures changed. So this is actually all of my, but all of my pressure is now changed. So something seems weird to me. Anyway, all my pressures changed, so therefore something does actually change. We frankly, this is a lovely thought question. This is a lovely, interesting thought question. But just realize that we are gonna focus on constant volume. So constant volume is what we focus on. We don't focus on constant pressure. Focus on constant volume. Also, I want to, with this one, is the next one? Did I lose one? No, I just did that one. But it's a good question. It's an interesting question. But honestly, that's a better like PLTO question, the constant, the constant pressure one. Because it's designed to have you guys talk to each other and think about what might be happening. Okay. The decomposition of ammonium hydrogen sulfide looks like this. It's an endothermic process, so the problem tells me that a certain gram sample of the solid is placed in an evacuated four-liter vessel at exactly twenty-four degrees Celsius after equilibrium, the total pressure is a certain amount. Some solid remains in the vessel. What's KP for the reaction? What percent of the solid is decomposed? If the volume of the vessel were doubled, what happens if you have a solid in the vessel? Okay. First of all, is this balanced? It is excellent. So you, so a couple of things about this problem. So one, I am gonna write this out over here so that I have something to write on. So a couple of things. First of all, it says evacuated container. That is so that when we talk about how much gas is being produced, the gas that is being produced is all one thing. So it's a four-liter vessel, the total pressure inside is point seven oh nine atmospheres, and all of that is coming from the whatever solids. That was supposed to be the word pure. Whatever solid is essentially decomposing into these two gases. So whatever is happening here, that pressure is made up of only these two things. So this is a solid, so I don't really count what's happening there. I am gonna, because these are both zero, I'm gonna make both of these things. And I actually know that since my total pressure is made up of only these two things, I can actually go ahead and take that total pressure and just divide it by two. Because all of the gas is gonna come from the ammonia and the hydrogen sulfide. And that's the only place that that can come from. There are two things, they should be in equal amounts. So here is my three, five, four, five. So that's now the reason, part of the reason why I know that is again, because it says that it's an evacuated four-liter vessel. So that evacuated tells me that there's no air in there. So that when it says total pressure, the total pressure is only coming from the products that was made. That's the only place a product can come from. It's the only thing I expect there to be. So as far as KP, this, there's nothing wrong with this problem. That's fine. So KP is equal to just these two things multiplied by themselves, because the solid should not be in my K expression. So the pressure of ammonia times the pressure of the hydrogen sulfide. So that is zero point three, five, four, five times itself. Or I guess I could have done that squared. So KP should be zero point one two six. So there's my KP value. Then it wants to calculate how much of the solid is sublimated. This is another one of those times where, in order to get what percentage. So in order to do this, because we know we have a gram sample, this is honestly just a lovely reminder that you guys can do stoichiometry. So in order to do this, what I would need to do is I would need to back calculate. So first of all, I know that it's point three, five, four, five atmospheres. I would need to go ahead and use PV equals NRT to go ahead and calculate the moles. We would not make you do this, by the way. So anytime you see the gas law in there, that's a question we would never put on an exam. It is just the gas law. So being aware that you can interconvert between pressure and moles is not a bad idea. It's not a bad thing. But anytime you're like, would you ever ask us this on any exam? You're always welcome to ask. If it's the gas law, the answer is no. So, but this is what you would have to do. You'd have to take your atmospheres, you'd have to solve this out to get the moles. And then you could essentially back calculate to say for every one mole of my ammonia, I would have one mole of the original solid. So however many moles of this I have is the number of moles that was reacted and then subtracted. But this is in grams, it's not in moles. But you also have to go ahead and do the molar mass. So this, so part B has a shocking large number of calculations. So part B, honestly, I think it's a good reminder. It's good problem-solving skills. That's part of why I'm not actually doing the math out for B. Part B is honestly in there so that you can think through. If this is what they're asking me for, how do I get there? What do I have? What do I need? What can I do to get there? So again, you want percentage of the solid is decomposed. In order to figure that out, we need to connect back the products to the reactants. If we're doing that, that's stoichiometry, that's done in a mole-to-mole basis. I have atmospheres, so I have to go from atmospheres to moles using the gas constant, and then I can go from moles of products to moles of the reactant, and then I can go from moles of the reactant to grams of the reactant, and then it wants percentage. So then I can put a ratio together with how much has, how much I've used divided by the total. So then I could have used divided by total grams. But all of that is to practice your problem-solving skills. So for people that ask me questions like, when I get on a problem, I really just don't know what to do, part of figuring that out is practicing. And so B is actually really nice practice for how do I get from point A to point B? See, if the volume of the vessel were doubled, sorry, allergies, if volume of the vessel were doubled at constant temperature, what would happen to the amount of solid in the vessel? So this, again, this is that same Lachatley's principle where I basically have more moles of gas on the right. And if I double the vessel, the volume gets bigger, I would expect it to be, to go towards more moles. So this would just be a shift to the right. Now, there is, there is talking through most of that question. Not all of it, but most of it. So let me go back up here and see. I need to leave my house pretty soon. So some other things that students, students ask me, what part of GenK one should I review just in case? Just really your strong acid, strong bases. Those things we need. Whatever notes you've got on acids and bases from GenK one, honestly. Because we kind of flew through that. So whatever notes you've got on acids and bases from GenK one, those are useful. Those are good to have. We've all, technically, the fact that when bonds break, that's endothermic, and when bonds form, that's exothermic. That's also a GenK one thing. And honestly, your polyatomic ions are never a bad idea. I know this sounds really silly when I say it, but honestly, I'd actually recommend you guys just print out or write out all your polyatomic ions, get a physical copy of it, and put it on your bathroom mirror so you look at it when you brush your teeth. This, no joke, is the way I used to memorize things in college. I would just put whatever I had to memorize that semester for, for that exam on the bathroom mirror. And then that way, every time I brushed my teeth, I'd look at it for like, what, two minutes a day, or well, twice a day, four minutes a day, which doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it's a really nice way to put things in your long-term memory so that you don't have to re-memorize them every single exam. Lachatley's principle and the factors that affect equilibrium. Um, I think I've done most of these by now. So we've had a lot of talks about gases. We had some talks about heat. I think that might be in here as well. So for, I'm gonna go ahead and check that one off, even though I did not go through every single one of those. How come we don't include solid or liquid states in the equilibrium expression? So we don't include solids, liquids in equilibrium expression. So here's something that you might not have thought about. When we are talking about an equilibrium expression, and part of what we are trying to describe is we're trying to describe how concentrations can change. So we could write a KC expression. But the thing is, is that we are expecting, if it's in the KC expression, that it's a concentration that can change, that can be modified. If I'm trying to talk about the concentration of a pure liquid, if, when I'm talking about concentrations here for aqueous things, that's in moles per liter. If I'm talking about a liquid and I wanna talk about moles per liter, but it's a pure substance. Moles per liter of a pure substance is really more like its density. I understand density is actually grams per liter, but this is still an amount of stuff per volume, just like density is. So the thing is, is that that liquid won't change the amount of stuff per volume. The total amount you have might, but the concentration won't change. How much you have per unit of volume won't change. The aqueous species do, though. How many moles per liter you have, those can change. The pure liquid doesn't. To give yet another biology example, I don't know if y'all have come across it yet, but you can actually calculate the molarity of water inside of a cell. Because essentially, if something is aqueous, you can calculate what the rest of it is. So you can do a calculation that basically demonstrates like, here is my, here is my concentration of acid, or here is my concentration of whatever. And then since there is this much volume, you can calculate the concentration of the water. It's really high. It's like fifty-five point five molar. And essentially, that fifty-five point five molar of pure water doesn't change because it's so ridiculously large that that's the concentration of water. And it doesn't change. So that's, so this is the one part where honestly, I like the old, the thermodynamic definition of equilibrium better because solids and liquids are still are not written in your equilibrium expression, but they are what we refer to as unity. So not just, oh, they're one, but they are actually, we refer to them as, as unity because they are something that does not change. So it's not that they're just forgotten. It's the fact that that pure water is taken out because it is unity. It is one, and it is always one as its definition, because it's not changing. Same thing goes for solids. I am, by the way, in, there's a couple of these questions that I'm gonna be doing in another follow-up video, because I'm gonna run out of time, but I will post that separately. Has a reaction being endo and exo affects temperature changes in the reaction? So people overall don't like the temperature changes with the reaction. Because I got this, and this is also what this one in green actually is talking about as well. So what's happening when Um, so what's happening when our temperature changes? There are, so the way, the way that we covered it in class is basically if I have A. In equilibrium with B and it's exothermic. I am therefore going to assume if it's exothermic that heat is a product. Then if I tell you that my temperature increases, we're going to treat that like. Just like we added more products. So all the parts in blue is my setup. I have a reaction of A goes to B. Somehow it tells me that it's exothermic. This is exothermic, I'm going to have the heat as a product. Then the question tells me my temperature increases. That is the same then as if I added additional product on top of that. So since I added more product, that's going to be a shift. Left. Conversely, if the temperature decreased. That would be as if I removed a product. Because this is an exothermic reaction and I would expect a shift right. And if it's endothermic, all of these things switch. So I do think that's part of why people don't like the exothermic, endothermic thing is because. Everything matters and you basically have to do this analysis in two steps. The first step is, is it endothermic, is it exothermic? So where am I assuming the heat is in my reaction? Then step two, if the temperature changes. Does that count as adding more product or does that count as adding more reactant? Or removing a product or removing a reactant? And you're just going to make the same changes. That you would have if that's what you were doing. Now, all of that being said, the thing to keep in mind is, is that if you are changing temperatures. Um, temp changes. Do change K. So what is really happening is your equilibrium constant itself is changing. But honestly, at this point for a follow up video, I would just say that's where we're going to stop on that idea. And it is therefore related to whether the reaction is endothermic or exothermic. Uh, as to how that changes, but honestly, the analysis will work just fine considering heat as a product or reactant. Is there's any quick, other quick ones I can do out of those? Um. So this other one says, how can I study for conceptual questions? So I do have a couple of general tips for conceptual questions. Um. So, and the tips go something like this, because they don't, don't always like my, my ideas. Um, but honestly, I don't, I don't have any other ones. Um, so for conceptual questions, a couple of things you guys can do. Um, in addition to studying, what I'm going to recommend is that you do something that is active. So for conceptual questions, study with people. I know that a group of people are much more likely to just share interesting video clips with one another. Or go in search of snacks than they are to study. I know that. But the thing is, is you gotta talk, um. Uh, talk, talk chemistry. Now, I understand that this can be frustrating, which is why if you're going to talk chemistry. Um, there's going to be a follow up to this. Um, you need to have the ability to also go check with somebody who knows more than you so that you can get verification. The other one is to basically make your own, uh, make your own questions. I know that this is uncomfortable. But make your own questions, uh, so you can, so there's, there's lots of different places that you can actually just use, uh, into chapter has some. That you can just use into chapter questions, um, previous exam. Twenty twenty three exam, there are places where they exist. Um, slides, they're usually not on there, but sometimes slides. Um, make your own question. The thing is, is that if you make your own, you try to like modify it a little bit to see like, okay, if I change this word, is it still true? If I change this, is it false? This does have a high frustration level. So if you were going to do this, then you have got to, um, go to office hours. Um, or your SI or your PLTL leader or somebody. Because the thing is, is, is that making your own questions, either based on other questions or by trying to like manipulate phrases. To see if you can make them just a little bit wrong or a little bit true. Um, the thing is, is a lot of times you may change it in a way that then you don't know what the right answer is. And that's a beautiful place to be, because then you're thinking actively about what's going on. You're considering like. What is the correct answer? How do I figure this out? But it can be really frustrating. Um, so you want to go to office hours essentially to get unfrustrated. Because a little bit of frustration, um, as far as, hey, we're going to have a conversation about this problem. And see where we can get is useful. Um, but a lot of frustration. Where is not useful, right? So don't, don't rage quit chemistry. Um, just try and then we get stuck. Get help. Okay, conceptual questions. Uh, I'm going to do more with the five percent rule. Um. When it comes to volume changes, we decrease the volume when we add to the number of moles or each equilibrium, we use the original moles. So the main reason I want to talk about this one, when it comes to volume changes, if we decrease the volume, would we have to add to the number of moles? So it's equilibrium again. The thing to keep in mind is when you're getting values of equilibrium, you can have lots of options. For those actual values. So keep in mind that even though we often talk about them and I even will use. Uh, like ones and twos just to make my math easier. Keep in mind that there's a lot of different numbers, a lot of different values that can still equal that KP or KC value. Um, so that's oftentimes why we're using the term shift. Because we're not necessarily going to get back to the actual original numbers we started with. But we're going to find new values that still satisfy KP or KC. Do we have to know polyatomic ion names? I'm just going to say yes to this, uh, because sometimes they come up and sometimes they don't. Um, main topics, I struggle with answering that. Um, what are some examples of reaction shifting in direction that wouldn't necessarily be logical? I don't know, honestly. I understand the question, like what are some ways that we could be tricky about this? Um, but the hard thing is I'm actually the one that wrote your La Chatley's principal questions. So I think that they are perfectly logical as I wrote them. Um, so I have no idea what wouldn't be logical. Uh, will there be theoretical questions about La Chatley's principle? I really wish I had a better idea of what this question was aiming for, because I, because the hard thing with La Chatley's principle is they're all theoretical. Right? Like usually for La Chatley's principle, we don't actually calculate numbers. We just say, hey, if we add this, tell me what happens. Um, and so I think all of those are theoretical La Chatley's principal questions. Where if you add a catalyst, what happens to the equilibrium? Nothing, by the way, that answers nothing. Um, so I think that they're all theoretical. Uh, does the lowest grade, lowest exam grade get replaced by the final? Yes, assuming the final is higher. So at the very end of the semester, you can check the syllabus, it's on there. At the very end of the semester, we look at all four of your midterm grades. Um, and if the final is higher, then the final will also replace one of your exam grades. Um, the final does also just count for the final, so the final counts no matter what. I think I forgot what the percentage is. I have to look at your syllabus. Um. Effective strategy to prep for upcoming exams. Um. Different things. So one of the things that I always worry about when people are preparing for exams, and this is going to be the last thing I say. Um, so I can actually go ahead and get, uh, to campus, because I'm going to be late. Um, the one thing I will say about preparing for exams. Is there's, there's two things I'm always looking for. One is different things. So sometimes people will like go to their room and study. But that's the only thing that they ever do, uh, is they study. I know that talking to people about chemistry is uncomfortable. I know study groups are better at finding snacks than actually studying. I know. But having some way to engage with the material in a different way is valuable. That's part of why we do workshops on Fridays, so that y'all have an opportunity to engage with the material in a new and different way. Um, so SI sessions, peer tutoring, chemistry clinic. The person you sit next to in class, ask them if they want to just do like three end of chapter problems on a Wednesday afternoon. Talk to each other. Um, and by the way, for study groups, I definitely recommend having a plan. Um, so even if it's just like, hey, let's do the first three end of chapter problems out of chapter sixteen. That's a plan. Um, so maybe after those three questions, you go in search of snacks, but at least you did some problems, right? Um, so that's the first thing is different things. So not just the same thing over and over and over again, but different things. The other thing is an active form of studying. So I always get a little worried when people tell me that they look over the slides, that they read the textbook. All of those are passive. They're not bad. Um, multiple passes definitely always helps, but part of the reason why we like workshop into chapter problems, Alex. Is it gives you a chance to look at the material and ask, what do you know? Where did you get stuck? Um, does everything just make beautiful sense or, uh, somewhere along the lines that the algebra just kind of gets you? So having a way to see what do you know? And where are your weaknesses before the exam day? Um, again, that is supposed to be part of the goal of workshop. I know for my classes, I used lecture, uh, workshop for lecture. Um, I made a workshop, uh, but we didn't have a lot of time to go over it, but that actually is a purpose of workshop is to get you guys to try problems out. And see where you are before exam day. Um, and if you can, take the old exam, uh, the twenty twenty three, the, yeah, twenty twenty three exam and like sit down for eighty minutes. And just do the exam from beginning to the end. See how you do. Um, so I realize that the old exam too had half lives on it, half lives aren't on it this year. Because the exam material shifts, ice days, weird things happen. Um, but those are the sorts of things to consider. Is finding a way to test yourself before exam day. Another reason why I like SI is because they'll make material up for you. Um, and obviously PLTL goes into all of that too, but you can't join PLTL anymore. So I usually stop mentioning PLTL. After the first week of classes, because either you're in PLTL and that's awesome, or you're not in PLTL and that's okay too, because we have lots of other resources. So hopefully it helps you guys out. Um, I'm going to make sure we get this posted so we can get all of the things up. Um, and I'll owe you guys one more video, but that'll come.